All right. Good evening. I have 6:00 PM and I'd like to call this meeting to order and determine that we do have a quorum for the meeting. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting. There been any changes or do we need to make any additions? Or do we have a motion to accept the meetings as presented, the meeting minutes as presented from our September 19th meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Do I have a second?
I second that. A motion.
Motion carries. The next item is the new business, item AZM 2023-0137, Younts Road Lot 5 rezoning.
All right. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Is this working?
Doesn't sound like it.
It's on. Green light. Testing, one, two, three. Okay. Can everyone hear me? I think yes. Well, good evening, everyone. I'll be presenting this case, our first case for tonight. As you mentioned, ZM 2023-0137. This is titled Younts Road Lot 5, and this is a conventional, let me see if I can move this, conventional rezoning request or straight rezoning request. This is simply amending the zoning map from one zoning district to another. No special conditions, no concept plan required for these type of rezonings. So the request for this case is to rezone one parcel to GBD, General Business District. The parcel number is 0708-4037, corresponds with lot number five on Younts Road. This parcel is between Brown Lane and Woodhaven Lane. It's .25 acres in size or 10,890 square feet, and it's unoccupied, vacant, empty land. The intent behind the request is, well, there's Plan A, the applicant has, his first plan is to develop a small office building for that, for their business. But if that plan doesn't work, the applicant also has Plan B, which is simply to market and sell the property. The applicant is Allison Construction Corp., the owner is Alvaro Gonzalez, and their main trade is building and refurbishing tennis Now, we have an aerial slide here, a slide of an aerial map, and what we can see here is that the subject property is the red bordered area in the center of the map. The yellow line represents Younts Road. The orange lines represent Woodhaven Lane on the north side and Brown Lane on the south side. And so the property is within that section of Younts Road between those two residential roads. Now, within that block, we can see that there's some residential homes that have been highlighted with green markers. There's, right now, six homes in that section of Younts Road. What we can also appreciate is those green, I'm sorry, blue shaded areas. On the east side, west side is Metroline Christian Academy. They're currently developing that area and adding a soccer field. On the east side, we have Union Prep Academy, and, you know, that's been there for some time. And so that, that's there to give us a sense of, of the area around the subject property. Now, let's look at some street view perspectives. This is looking southeast on Younts Road. The subject property is on the right side where the, where the trees are located. This is another angle looking northwest on Younts Road. This is towards Woodhaven Lane. Now, if we were to stand on the subject property and look across the street, we would see this home, 2416 Younts Road. This was built in 1980, sometime around that year, and it's sitting on half an acre. If we were in front of the subject property but now looking northwest, we would now see, or get a sense of the neighborhood in that area. On the left side, there's a home that was built fairly recently, 2020. It's sitting on half an acre. But then to the right, there's another home built in 1960 that's sitting on three quarters of an acre. If we were to go in the opposite direction towards Brown Lane at that, if we were standing on that intersection, Brown Lane and Younts Road, looking northwest, we would see two other homes on that corner. The one on the left was built in 1968. It's sitting on half an acre. The one on the right, built in 1997, also sitting on half an acre. So now that we have a visual image of the area, let's consider the existing zoning and the future land use of the surrounding area. Here we have a zoning map. The subject property is highlighted in, or, yeah, in the red bordered area. It's zoned SF1, residential, single-family, low-density. And we can see that the majority of the parcels around the area are also shaded in that yellow, which means they're also residential. Most of these parcels are part of the Rosemary subdivision. Now, it's important to point out that the Metroline Christian Academy and the Union Prep Academy area, that's also zoned residential. They are allowed uses, but they are, in fact, institutional land uses. And so that's, that's an important difference, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. But the key takeaway from this map is noticing that there is a commercial presence in the area. As you can see there, directly adjacent to the subject property, there are 10 parcels that were recently zoned to General Business District back in June of 2023. And so that's where we see that first emergence of commercial zoning. But not far, not far from there, we have further south, next to Union Prep Academy. You can see a sliver of that parcel on the bottom right corner of your screen, and that property was conditionally zoned to GBD in 2012, and that's where the existing mini-golf business is located. Now, if we move on to the future land use map, and we will notice that the recommendations from the future land use map in our comprehensive plan are not that different from what's existing. On the north side of Rosemary Park, we see that it recommends medium-density residential, whereas the rest of the area recommends low-density residential. That's what is existing now. So, one could ask, so why are we considering rezoning this parcel? Why are we, even, why would we consider deviating from the recommendations? Well, there's a couple of factors. If we look at, or if we do a comparison between residential development in the area and commercial development, we're going to see these factors. For example, starting with residential development, it's challenging in that area to develop residentially. Number one, there's a lack of sewer availability in that area. And so property owners have to seek the alternative, which is septic systems. Now, if they go in that direction, well, they still have to pass the soil tests. And if they fail, those soil tests, well, they're, they're stuck. What if they do pass that test? Well, another challenge is the size of those lots of record. They are small. And so if you are able to put a septic system in there with the required leach field component to it, well, that consumes a section of that land, and now you have a reduced area to build on. The lots of record for that subdivision are .25 acres, and just to compare what our minimum lot size standard for SF1, it's .46 acres. And you, you may have noticed in those slides where we were showing you those properties in, from the street perspective, most of those properties are on half an acre of, of land, because that's what a lot of property owners have had to do to be able to find the good soil and have enough buildable area for, for residential homes. The applicant, for this case, just has one lot. He does not have two, so it's very challenging to, to develop it, and that's a challenge in that area. But if we look now at commercial development, well, there may be some future growth. We saw on the previous slide that those 10 parcels that were recently rezoned commercial back in June of 2023, we also saw that there is institutional uses, for example, Union Prep Academy. And those institutional uses, although, although they are allowed in SF1, they are at a higher land use intensity than residential. Not quite at the level of commercial, of course, but they are different. And so you can consider a land use impact such as increased traffic in that area. That's what a school can do to, to that area, and that changes the, the area. And then we also saw that there's existing commercial use, such as the Trails Dynasty mini-golf. So because of this commercial potential, town staff is of the opinion that the future land use recommendations that we saw on the future land use map needs reevaluation. And there's language in our comprehensive plan that supports this. For example, Section 6.3.1.1, on the topic of US 74 West Corridor Plan, says, and I quote, "This segment of the US 74 corridor is currently suburban in character but is anticipated to become more urban." And then in that same section, it says, "This area is expected to become a subregional activity center." So the comp plan is recognizing that there's potential for more commercial growth in that area. Now, in a separate section in a map in the comp plan, Figure 6.3.11, now talking about the transportation plan for that area, identifies Younts Road to become a four-lane activity center boulevard, whereas right now it's just a two-lane road. And so what that means is that a busier road, well, it'll drive down the residential appeal of that area and increase the appeal of commercial. In this next slide, we, we wanted to show you a sample of what that US 74 West Corridor is. And if you pay attention to that marker that's flashing, that's where the subject property is located with respect to the area. And then you can see that red dashed line going from Fairview Road and then just curving all the way towards Highway 74 and then, and then down. And so that is where that comp plan identifies Younts Road as, as a road that would have this improvement if there's, if there's more commercial development in that area. So let's summarize what we've discussed. We've mentioned that the request is for zoning to GBD for that parcel. We discussed that residential development is challenging and slow in that area, and based on what we've heard from other property owners, it's, we can anticipate that it'll stay that way. But then we see commercial development, may see growth in that area. We also learned that the comp plan anticipates development of an activity center in the area, which would encourage road improvements for Younts Road, and that would drive down residential appeal. So, the proposed, the, the staff is of the opinion that the proposed rezoning to GBD is reasonable and consistent. And so we can prepare this consistency statement. This proposed rezoning is reasonable and is in the public interest because it promotes the goals of the Indian Trail Comprehensive Plan in the areas of infrastructure goal number one, expand and improve public and private utilities, such as water, sewer, stormwater, electrical, natural gas, and communications infrastructure throughout the community, and economic development goal number one, which is to create a more balanced tax base by promoting the development of office parks, businesses, retail centers, and industrial parks. It also promotes a diverse local economy that will support varied employment opportunities. So this is the requested action from the board. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to take them.
I'd like to open it to questions. Any of the board members have questions?
Have there been any comments and questions from the, the people who live in the area?
We have not received any inquiries about it.
Do we have any public comments this evening?
No public comments.
Okay. And I'd like to ask the board to make a recommendation.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to ZM 2023-0137, Younts Road rezoning. I make a motion that be approved.
Do we have a second?
I second that emotion.
All in favor, raise your hand, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Passes. Thank you. The next bit of business is CZ 2023-0132, Axiflow Technologies rezoning.
Thank you. Can you hear me? So as mentioned, this is for CZ 2023-0132, Axiflow Technologies. It's a conditional Zoning request is for, I don't know if I'm speaking directly into this, for the parcel mentioned there. It's about 1.91 acres to take it from CZ GBD to CZ L-1, and that's General Business District for GBD and Light Industrial for the L-I. This company, the applicant, Axiflow Technologies, is looking to relocate their company to our community. And originally, they looked at this property, and it being in the Old Hickory Industrial Park, it was assumed that everything was, was looking good, and they were going to proceed with site plans for a building. And it turns out that this is a portion within Old Hickory that was previously conditionally approved for GBD at the intersection where they're located. This property is located on the corner of Stinson Hardest at the intersection with Indian Trail Fairview Road. Let's see here. So, the request is typically with CZ. Sometimes you see a concept plan with it. That is not required here. This request is only to change this zoning to the typical zoning that you see in Old Hickory. So if they have to relocate in the future, let's say in 20 years, if they grow and they need another location, they would like the options that everybody else has around them to have uses that are for Light Industrial instead of just being restricted to GBD, General Business District. On the screen is aerial perspective view of the site. I'll run my cursor around it, but it's at that, on the screen, that northwest corner. Here's a street view. This is looking northeast along Indian Trail Fairview Road, and there's one of the Old Hickory entrance signs there up ahead with the property on the left. The next photo is shot in the other direction with the property on the right, with that same intersection of Stinson Hardest there to the right. And then that's a photo shot up Stinson Hardest from the same location, the property on the left, very, still very wooded site. Here's a shot down Stinson Hardest towards Indian Trail Fairview Road with the property on the right. Here is a flat aerial map with the boundary. Here's the zoning map for the current zoning. I'll take my cursor here. You see the GBD in this blue striped, same thing across the street. It was GBD across Stinson Hardest as well, and, but it's still all part of Old Hickory on this west side of Indian Trail The future shows this, pretty much this entire area for office, also depicting it as an employment center in some portions of the comp plan, and that would all fit well within office or Light Industrial. So as part of the analysis, you see in the adjacent properties, there's a lot of Light Industrial that is currently surrounding the property on the north, south, and west. There's a little bit of single-family vacant lot across Indian Trail Road, remaining on the other side. And there's, of course, GBD on that east lot over there that's still vacant in the Old Hickory Business Park. As I mentioned in the comp plan, recommends office, but also mentions the Regional Employment Center. The parcel in this area is in the Old Hickory corridor that's specified in the comp plan. And for future development, Old Hickory Business Park continues to build out with several remaining parcels they have. And we looked at this, the proposed rezoning to the, you know, conditional change to Light Industrial is a reasonable and consistent request. As with the consistency statement that Town Council will need to approve, this proposed rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest because it promotes the goals from the comp plan. You see land use and housing, mentioning a variety of land uses, avoiding potential conflicts, economic development goal one, to have a balanced tax base, and to promote diverse local economy. So the requested action is just a motion to recommend approval of the conditional zoning request to just change the zoning from conditional GBD, General Business District, to the Light Industrial conditional zoning for the Old Hickory Business Park.
Any questions from the board?
I don't have any questions. I'm, I'm familiar with the area. It makes a lot of sense.
I just have one question. It makes sense to me, too, but I just have one quick question for clarifying. If we approve this motion, there's still the, the tree buffer that must be in, in place, correct?
Yes. We have, we have held up on the site plan review. So even with the byright site plan review, there's, there's conditions, of course, in Old Hickory, but there's all our UDO conditions that we're reviewing on it for tree save, for tree buffers. Yes.
Good. Okay. Do we have any public comments?
No public comments at this time.
Okay. I'd like to open it for a motion from the board.
I move to recommend approval of the conditional zoning request, CZ 2023-0132, as presented.
I second the motion. All in favor, raise your hands. Say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item C is ZT 2022-0075, UDO amendments.
Thank you. Just when you thought that the downtown material was big, you get another big package. So Merry, Merry Christmas. Don't say I never gave you anything.
Seventy-five pages to 91 pages. Groovy.
Yeah. So, I apologize for it a little bit, but also, it is, it has been a long-going list. Even before we, we began formalizing some of these things onto paper and discussions in 2022, this existed on people's lists at their desks, sticky notes, and once we got past the comp plan, we were like, let's start working on this. And, let's see here. This is an amendment request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance to provide needed revisions found by staff over a period of time. That time was also extended with the downtown study. That was extended into this year as well, and we knew there were going to be some UDO changes just for downtown. So we put this on hold for a little bit longer until now. The intent is to incorporate changes that were from the previous comp plan back in 2021, the 2041 update for the comprehensive plan. There's some structural changes in the UDO that just need to be, be changed for that. Some name changes and for, you know, the activity centers, for one. Those, those name changes need to change and a few other things that are in the packets. There's also a few small North Carolina statute requirements here and there that have, that we needed to incorporate some language on. Language clarification. There are several times where we, we bang our heads and come together, and there's some, some things that we kept revisiting, and we're like, hey, put it down for an edit, and let's, and let's clarify that language so that it's not only clear to staff, but it's, it's clear to folks who look in the document as well. And then also add various new code requirements. I'll, I'll get into a few of those in a, in a moment, but it's, it's a good chance to put in some new material and, and update some sections as well. So, as I mentioned, this is, this is from staff. It's down as Planning Department, but we've also coordinated with the Engineering Department. I will not go over this table of contents from your, your packets, but in order to track each one of these sticky notes and each one of these topics over the last couple of years, we've organized them into these subtopics. And so it's in your packet, covers a lot of things. This is the second page of them, all the way up to UU. And, and we just need to stop and try to get this approved before we get down to AAA. So that was my hope. So let's not, let's not go that far. So revision aspects, I was trying to figure out the best way to show this to you, and in a general way, we have several minor revisions and several more involved revisions. Minor revisions, there's changes, like I mentioned, from the last comprehensive plan adoption. Those are pretty straightforward. There's the addition of needed minor code changes. Like, we didn't have detailed procedures for the grading-only permit, and so we would always run into questions on that process or have to do some backtracking on it. So we want to lay that out. Clarification of just existing language or section intent in different areas throughout those changes. So those are the minor revisions. So revisions that were more involved. So revisions that were more involved and just in general going over some examples. Removing unnecessary overlays. There were overlays after overlays, uh, difference generations of staff, uh, planning staff, that kept organizing and reorganizing. And so we were just trying to clean up some things and, um, and use this new tool that we've had for a couple of years, conditional zoning, uh, that will basically, uh, help to change, uh, some of the things that are, that are in those overlays. Can be a tool. Removing references to overlays as being overlay districts. It's just a change, a diff, a differ of, uh, philosophy. So, uh, overlays are overlays, districts are districts. And they, whoever was in last, making those revisions in the old document, old UDO, decided to call them overlay districts. And, uh, we want to take out things that are a little misleading and, uh, so we want to change that verbiage. We dealt with, uh, requests overnight stays at gas stations and convenience markets. Uh, we've had, uh, a request or two to come in where, uh, you know, they were wanting to pilot things like a, a pilot gas station where you have a major stop for eighteen wheelers, you know, that type of size vehicle. But, uh, they wanted overnight stays and we just wanted something before that really comes in as an official, official submittal. We want to make sure that that's not coming in to be, uh, a parking lot. We get lots of requests for just, uh, buying up land to park many, many eighteen wheelers. And not to become, uh, multiple night overnight stay for, for a truck. But one night, uh, I think is what we have in your packet to allow them to stay one night and then, uh, continue on their journey. Accessory retail sales. We've had several businesses attempt to add uses, uh, at their stores. Convenience market may try to add a whole other kiosk with vaping or, or whatever the matter may be. And there's, there's things that are coming up with those accessory uses that we need to have additional scrutiny on before they just add them inside their business or outside on their site, uh, that impedes certain things like ADA access and containers and, and things like that. Vehicle sales rental lots. We have lots of requests for, uh, vehicle sales rental lots. Currently it's two acres townwide. Right now we're slating, uh, to, uh, keep guiding those, uh, two acre developments minimum for Highway seventy-four in Old Monroe. Uh, Old Monroe, when it's redeveloped, is going to be more of a commercial corridor. And, uh, other sites, uh, that go out and enter our communities, we put a five acre requirement on them to get them to kind of, as a disincentive or an incentive to look at those other two corridors, Old Monroe or Highway seventy-four. Okay, to continue, uh, another area was single family, uh, parking areas. Single family must provide one space per room. After the first three bedrooms, before we weren't concerned with how many bedrooms the home had, but we thought to cover ourselves, uh, since parking is, is a big issue in many communities. If we happen to get some homes that have a lot of bedrooms, uh, we want to increase that parking space. See garages, uh, we were, we were trying to interpret things, uh, for garages and that they're not really parking spaces, but, uh, we wanted to formalize that in our code. I know everybody isn't like me and has junk in their garage and can't pull their vehicle in there, but, you know, that's not always guaranteed. So, uh, for parking a car, uh, garage, we don't count as one of the units for a developer that comes into the community. We want plenty of spaces to be provided outside. Let's see here, an additional sign for multifamily and subdivisions. They used to only get one sign at an entrance. Now we can increase that. Building line formalization, uh, when you look at that portion in the packet, we had a problem with several home sites existing throughout the town in older neighborhoods where you have an open lot. And somebody wants to come in and, and put in a brand new house. And our concern is, uh, you know, due to laws in North Carolina, we can't get too specific with what we require on materials, but we can be specific to consistency, uh, in the neighborhood. And, uh, that's one of those items where your homes should, there's some code stuff that we're putting in the code to get homes to somewhat line up, uh, and not be pushed back too far or not be pushed far ahead of someone where, you know, you're blocking the view of their view of things. Lot coverage, uh, we looked at, uh, how the state follows some of the, uh, stormwater runoff standards and applied some of those percentages to different density type homes on what they can add. And it also impacts, goes over and impacts accessory structures. But how much coverage can each person build on their residential lot to, uh, cover the land, um, after an approval? Let's see, electric car charging stations. Electric cars are, uh, coming. I've already reviewed, uh, two, two plans so far, uh, for, for two sets of stations that were being put in existing businesses. And this is not to require stations. That's a whole different level of a, of a town to get to, to require that from developers. This is only to make, uh, requirements for, okay, you have to provide, uh, whatever's required for ADA, to have a handicap spot if you're having so many stations. Or, um, when you have that equipment, in addition to the plug-in station that sits there, a lot of these have a big electrical or one or two different transformers and electrical equipment. And this is just to require like, uh, landscaping, screening for that, to help soften, uh, that when they're placed in our, you know, our commercial areas and, and things like that. So, uh, that's the only purpose for that section. Conversion of certain architectural requirements to desired design elements in conditional zoning. Our architectural section and its requirements have been in there for, for quite a while. And, uh, legislation has changed in North Carolina, restricting how much you can require on, uh, single family homes and, um, for, uh, building by right. So, uh, this was a first shot at trying to take and make that section more compliant and show those elements that we still appreciate in the architectural section and, uh, place them as desired and not required. So they're desired when we get them to go through a conditional rezoning. Uh, if they're just building their own house, uh, they have to refer to other sections, but it's not as restrictive as if they have to, you know, if we negotiate with them during conditional zoning, we can use our desired list. Adding more detail to open space requirements for attached and multifamily residential developments. One of the things this section does is to add more language about how this space is usable, but also, uh, requirements for how many amenity areas you should have depending on the size of the, the development. Let's see, dwelling parking space regulations. This section does a couple of things. The first thing it does is to kind of lay down a, a, the difference between a driveway and a driveway. We have two driveways. We have a driveway where you park in front of your house and we have driveways where you drive through a lot up to your house. And we've been using those interchangeably and we always have to think, okay, which one are we talking about? Okay, we're talking about that. So this is to establish, uh, we found another community using this term dwelling parking spaces. Dwelling parking spaces are those spaces right in front of your garage, where you park outside in front of your house. So, um, in a driveway, that's not it. The driveway is a roadway somewhat. So, uh, within that, it also gets into, uh, single lanes, uh, uh, widths of those dwelling spaces in front of the house. And it wasn't specified in the other section of our code, for eleven feet wide for a single lane and twenty feet wide for a double lane. The, the other, uh, engineering standards deals with that a little bit differently. And there will be some changes coming up in the future with, um, how we deal with some of those requirements and the sections that go along with those in, at the engineering department. As, and we'll collaborate, yeah, this is a collaborated effort. No other items other than, uh, general residential vehicles can park in dwelling spaces. The section goes into quite a bit of detail on what can be parked and what can't be parked in those areas. And, uh, we worked closely with our code enforcement folks who, uh, who, uh, very, they know this, the situation's out in the field very well. So we wanted to coordinate with them as we drafted this section up. Okay, coming towards the end. So another thing we added, I guess it's, it's not too, too major, is florist. And, um, it's a use under the retail category. We didn't have that before and that came up as a needed use. Minimal regulations added for accessory use, short-term rental, whole, for the whole house. We've, there's been, uh, a lawsuit that came out, was that for Wilmington you had mentioned? Yeah, city of Wilmington. And so we've received quite a bit of information from the school of government and, and through conferences on, uh, regulation of, uh, short-term rentals. We didn't want to go overboard. So there's, there's pretty much the minimal, uh, in there, uh, you'll see in your packets for, uh, what we want to, you know, interject.
Is that like an Airbnb type of thing?
Yeah, short-term, uh, yeah, coming in for a week or weekend. Let's see, uh, flex space. We have had a lot of inquiries and several submittals for flex space. We have one or more under construction right now. And, uh, we've experienced, um, pretty much two different types of flex spaces and we wanted to start treating them differently. We have flex spaces that are heavier on the, the retail traffic, uh, more of the storefront with, with, you know, a, a roll-up door as a secondary, uh, function of the building. And then the other type is more of a light industrial where you have more of the spaces for, uh, a light industrial use such as warehousing or anything else under light industrial. And the, the front area, or if there's any retail area, it's, it's less than a certain percentage. Alley requirements. We wanted to put more details on alley, you know, alleys. And, uh, if they choose to use them as an option, here are some things we want to see as a standard. But also when lots are fifty feet wide or less, when they're very packed, we want to see that alley requirement to be mandatory, uh, because it's just too narrow to have any kind of landscaping or much less a stoop to try to get in a door in the front. And, uh, an alleyway is, is a good way to do that. Distance requirements standardized for electronic gaming, body piercing, tattooing, and tobacco vape operation uses. This was basically to take two different distances that were in the code and standardize them for both. Uh, we had gaming requirement that was the two thousand feet. We had, uh, the other uses of five hundred foot and we just set two thousand feet for any of those, uh, as a distance between all of those or any duplicates. Then accessory structure maximum size and quantity revisions. We had a table revision before from our last, I believe our last UDO edits from the one sixty D set. We also had some staff, uh, requests in with that. And we were trying a different table. And after, uh, the permanent technicians were testing that out, we wanted to revisit that and come up with some better recommendations for how it can better serve the homeowner, after we've experienced their requests, uh, when they've come in for those accessory structures. So... There were also a few revisions that, after we sent you the initial, uh, posted the initial packet or the initial set, uh, there's a few things that we've, we've done. We were deleting the downtown overlay, uh, that's still in a certain sections of, uh, of this request. And so now that the downtown has passed, there's a whole new light on that. And, um, may have to do some tweaks before it goes to council. But basically anything referring to a downtown overlay doesn't exist anymore after the fourteenth adoption of the downtown plan. Dwelling parking, uh, single lane, uh, we discussed that a little bit ago about the dwelling parking space being eleven feet wide. We had to tweak a number, I think we had ten foot down, maybe in the other document. Adding the new florist and a couple of other uses, we, now that the downtown, uh, districts have passed, we were, we were thinking, you know, these weren't in this set of tables, use tables that were revised for the downtown study. So there's a few left that need to be categorized, uh, as for if they're permitted or not permitted. And florist is one that I'd mentioned earlier. So for the downtown, uh, the core district and the transitional district, uh, let's see, they're permitted by right and not permitted in the transitional residential district because it's purely residential. For the flex space retail and the light industrial flex space that I mentioned earlier, that had to be assigned as well. And what we are proposing is for the core district, uh, to have, uh, the retail component only be conditional for the transitional district and, uh, not permitted, uh, for light industrial in the other sections of downtown. Just be reserved for other areas in town. And, uh, and that's listed in the, the table, uh, shown in the report. So there's a requested action, but, um, I'm curious if there's any questions or any other suggestions before we get to that point, because this is a lot of material.
Yeah, I was, I was overwhelmed when, when I saw ninety-one pages. I would like more time than, than the, uh, the couple of days that we've had to, to look at this. And I would also love to have your list that you just, uh, put up on. And I would also love to have your list that you just put up on our board specifying the important points because that will give us the focus to look in those areas. I understand so far we don't have any business to conduct in December, except maybe just this. Is that true? So far, we have no applications for December?
As of right now, we don't have any applications. It, I will say the December meeting is fairly close to Christmas, kind of like this meeting. So I would leave that up to the board. We're happy to come hang out with you if you want or if you wanted to punt it to January.
Yeah, I would love to take this, with that, with the additional information, I would love to take this up in our January meeting.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, that's a motion. I move that. I move that. Would we table this or just, what's the terminology that we should use?
Yeah, you can table it.
Table the final vote on this for our January meeting.
Do I hear a second?
I second that.
So moved. We will table this until our January meeting. All in favor? Aye.
And if I could make a suggestion, anytime between now and that meeting, if any one of you wants to set a time to come in and sit down with me, I'm fine with that, me or Brandy or both.
That would be great. Yeah, because this is, it's, the listing that you gave tonight helped me with going through the report as you were doing it, but I'd love to sit down with you. Yeah. Okay, we'll make a date.
Okay, the other business we have this evening is with Larry Duke's resigning, we need to appoint a new chairman for the planning board. Do we have any recommendations from the board?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to recommend you Cynthia Wiley as our new chairman.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a unanimous. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, it's an honor.
Now we need to appoint a vice chair.
Now we need to appoint a vice chair. Do we have any nominations from the board for a vice chair?
If nobody else is interested in doing it, I'd be happy to be your backup.
I love that. I'll second that. Ms. Beck Fielding as our vice chairwoman. All right, all in favor? Aye. Unanimous. Motion passes. Thank you very much. If there's no other public comment or anything else, we are ready to adjourn. Thank you for your time this evening and for all the comments and questions. Have a very happy Thanksgiving.
Yes.
And Christmas. I guess we won't see you until January. All right, thank you.